Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone today to the State Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, November 14, 2023, and we appreciate your patience. We had our committee meetings went a little longer today, and we did make it where we could have more speakers this morning and deliberate longer. So we appreciate you letting us delay this meeting just a little bit so we could do that. I would like to ask Dr. David O'Shield if he'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
If everyone would stand, please, at this time. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated.
As we begin, I do ask all board members or speakers to please speak directly in the microphone so that we're able to accurately transcribe the minutes for today's meeting. That being said, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of our last meeting. Is there any objection to approving the minutes as presented to you for the October 10, 2023, meeting? Hearing no objections, those minutes are approved by unanimous consent. We will move on to our approval of the agenda for today. Is there any objection to approving the agenda as presented for today's board meeting? Hearing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. We do welcome everyone in attendance today, and we thank you for your interest in the work of the State Board of Education. We do have a list where some people signed up as guests, so I would like to acknowledge those people at this time. We have Sheila Ryland from Constitution Day. Excuse me?
Convention of States.
Convention of States, thank you. Catherine Klein from SCASL, Tracy Williams from Teach Right USA, Michael Carruthers from the State Department, South Carolina Teacher of the Year, Deidre McCullough from Teach Right USA, Whitney Hendricks, Jay Bagley from Advocatus USA, Advocate USA. I'm sorry, y'all, it's tricky when I get this list right before a meeting starts. Jennifer Ridfield, maybe? The South Carolina Appleseed Legal System, Teresa Moldrow, RCEA, Glennis Haggins, NAACP, Kelly Neal, Sabrina Miles, YCEA, Corey Boyce, RCEA, and James Moldrow, BCEA. So we appreciate everyone who signed up as a guest today and all of the others who were in attendance. We also have media present, which I would like to acknowledge at this time. Cassidy Bayer from WLTX, Henry Schuster, CBS News, Marshanna Adams, Watch Fox, James Johnson, RSN, I apologize, Alexa Girardot, The State Newspaper, Brenda C. Murphy, NAACP, South Carolina. If there is any other news media that I did not share, if you would present yourself at this time? Okay, thank you. As I shared, we do welcome everyone here today. My chair report will be short. I mainly just wanted to mention the joint retreat we had last week with the Education Oversight Committee. It was such a wonderful time to be able to come together and have so many groups represented at the table, and to have that time not only to hear about great things that are happening, but really to focus on our path forward. We have successes that we can be happy about, but we know it's still a long journey, and the fact that everyone was working together for that common purpose of doing what's best for the students in South Carolina. So I think all of those that were there would agree. It was a wonderful day, wonderful to be able to break into groups and do strategic planning and talk about how we can get where we want to be. So I'm so glad for those of you who could attend. If you couldn't, we missed you, and we'd love to fill you in on the great, rich conversation that happened that day, but it is very exciting that we can come together in that way, and it was the first of many we hope will happen in the future. I would like to recognize Superintendent Weaver now for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Chair Lady Stapleton. Well, we are entering the season of Thanksgiving. It is officially November, and we had a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the service of our South Carolina Department of Education employees who have hit service milestones, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, and even we had two 40-year service awards. And so it was a wonderful opportunity to celebrate them, to celebrate their commitment to the state of South Carolina, to our educators and students. And at that celebration ceremony, we actually inaugurated a new award that we are calling the Spirit of South Carolina, and it is built on the duality of our twin mottos, hope that propels hard work here in South Carolina. And so we recognized Mike Bullman, who is the leader of our Office of Transportation. Mike is an amazing story. He actually started driving a school bus as a high school student, has literally done every job there is to do in our transportation shop, and through just years of dedication, hard work, faithful service, and one of the most incredibly positive attitudes I have ever experienced, now leads our Office of Transportation. And if there is something you want to know about school buses and transportation in South Carolina, let me tell you, Mike Bullman is the man to ask. He will gladly share with you everything that he knows. And so he is just a joy to work with, and so it was a privilege to be able to honor him. But speaking of honoring people, we are so honored to be able to here at the Department of Education invest every single day in elevating and celebrating the voice of our teachers. And so I have mentioned to you all previously an initiative that we are looking to roll out here that we are calling CARE, Character and Resilience Education. And you may think of that in the context of students, but it also certainly applies to how we support our educators. And so last month, we were able to roll out a partnership with former Superintendent Spearman and the Maxwell Leadership Foundation, in which we invited every educator in the state of South Carolina to participate in an online activity that we call the Transformation Table. And these transformation tables are all about shared values that we can bring to the work that we do every day. The first one that we spoke about, the first value we spoke about was hope. And again, I feel like that is so integral to our DNA as South Carolinians and really to education in general, because what is education if not hope for the future? And so for those of you who may be interested, I have brought a few copies of the lesson that we did together, and I just wanted to share very briefly some of the comments that we got back from teachers who participated in this. They said, "It was a wonderful experience sharing with colleagues. This is a truly effective way to make a difference in our profession that needs hopeful people to instill positivity in our students." Another said, "Awesome. It's hard to do evening Zooms. I didn't know what to expect, but I am so thankful that I attended. I gained a lot in an hour. A little bit of refreshment works wonders." Another teacher said, "I felt heard and valued, greatly appreciated the superintendent's acknowledgement of problems we are facing and teacher exhaustion and working with us to solve these problems. I felt like I am part of a statewide team who wants to create positive change in our state's education system." And then the last one that I'll share, just, "It was awesome. I am hopeful that this will make a difference and become contagious." And so that's just a few comments that we got from the hundreds of teachers who participated, and we actually have our next transformation table that is happening tonight. Dr. Julie Fowler, who is the superintendent of Spartanburg III, will be our special guest speaker, and she will be speaking on the topic of integrity. And so we have a number of these coming up, values, purpose, commitment, passion, empathy, attitude, and courage that will run through the end of May. Very excited for this initiative and just, I think, for the ability, again, to create a space for our teachers to share, to reflect, and to feel heard. Following up on what the chair lady spoke about with the State Board and Education Oversight Joint Meeting that we were privileged to have last week, I just wanted to share a few of my reflections from what I heard that day. And I think what was so powerful about the day was that there was a shared goal, which is really developing a shared vision and a sense of urgency for moving academic outcomes towards that 2030 moonshot that we talked about, 75% proficiency in English and math. We know we can get there, and that it's going to take a lot of work and alignment to do it. But one of the things that I was so encouraged about is that, you know, we spent our morning hearing from a nationally recognized expert, Dr. Kimiana Burke, about literacy and the science of reading and how they engaged in that work to really move the needle for students in Mississippi. We then heard from Sal Khan, who many of you all are familiar with, with Khan Academy and the incredible work that they're doing to catch children up in math, as well as some of just the transformative ways that they are harnessing technology and the power of AI in a way that safeguards and builds guardrails around the technology, but still makes it usable and accessible to students and teachers. But then it was the breakout sessions that really, I think, spoke most to me, and what was so amazing was that even though we were all in different small groups, there were themes that emerged across each of those groups. And so this is my best effort at synthesizing some of those themes that I heard, and I said, "You can give me a grade on how well I listened after this." But we did an exercise that's called Start and Stop, as you all recall. So in order to hit that 2030 moonshot, what do we have to stop and what do we have to start? So the first thing we said to stop was doing things just because we've always done them that way if they aren't supported by data or positively impacting student outcomes. The corollary start to that was better evaluating programs with quality data to demonstrate return on investment, focus future funding decisions, and address the greatest points of need, especially with a strong focus on the fundamentals. Our second stop was stop couching education conversations in negative terms, using doom and gloom language, and making excuses. The second start that goes with that was creating a culture of positivity and encouragement focusing on a common vision, collaboration, and a growth mindset, especially in how we speak about the teaching profession. The next stop was stop treating career readiness as less than college readiness. And the start for that was expanding experiential, hands-on, and applied learning that is relevant and provides multiple pathways to success. And then the final stop is stop working in silos. We heard that loud and clear. And the corollary start to that is expanding partnerships between K-12 educators, business leaders, and higher education. And so, again, the theme that I heard over and over throughout all of that was the intense and intensive need for good and better communication. And I think our meeting was a first step towards establishing that communication and dialogue and something that, as you said, Chair Lady Stapleton, we will be working to continue in the future. The last thing that I will mention today is that we have a very, very, very special guest with us today, and you want to talk about hope for the future. I truly believe that hope for the future is found in the incredible educators of this state. And so we are honored to be joined today, and I told her the crowd was here for her. Our State Teacher of the Year, Renee Atkinson, let me read a little bit about her, and then we will welcome her. She has served in education for 21 years, 17 of which have been in Ori County, where she has taught English to students in 10th to 12th grade at Aynor High School. Teaching is her calling, and while she has held various positions in her education career, her heart is in the classroom where she can directly impact students' lives every day. She considers her greatest contribution to education to be her ability to build positive relationships with students. And I will just say at a personal level what an honor and privilege it has been in the conversations that I have had with her to experience her kindness, her humility, and her sense of purpose and drive towards excellence on behalf of not only her students, but her fellow teachers to whom she serves as a mentor and a coach. So please join me in welcoming Renee Atkinson, our South Carolina Teacher of the Year.
Thank you so much for that and for having me here today. I am honored to be here and to have been selected South Carolina Teacher of the Year. It is a great privilege to represent over 50,000 educators and, most importantly, the students that they serve. This year, as an ambassador to education in our state, I have had the honor to work with students of all ages across the state and visit schools from the low country to the upstate. My SARA residency this year has allowed me to work with a variety of programs, from pro team students and teacher cadets who are interested in education, to teaching fellows and other pre-service teachers who will become future educators in our state, as well as current teachers, administrators, and district personnel. In the past few months, I've had a chance to meet or work with education professionals from representing every district across our state. Participating in events like Leadership South Carolina or South Carolina Education Policy Fellows has given me a chance to work with leaders in business, government, and education across the state. This role has granted me so many new experiences, but the greatest gift is the opportunity to represent my colleagues and our students. Thank you so much for having me today.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, and we are so glad you could be here with us today. I tell you, we were all applauding beside you as you were named the State Teacher of the Year, so congratulations. To our committee members, our board members, I'm used to saying committee all day today, to our board members, does anyone have any questions for Superintendent Weaver regarding her report? We do not have parliamentarian comments today, so we will move forward to public comment. We do have public comment today. I asked the board members if we could have a vote possibly to approve a change in our normal practice. We normally do 30 minutes, and everyone gets five minutes each, which only allows for six speakers. So what we would seek to possibly do today, if you are okay with that, is be able to do three minutes and allow 10 people to speak in regard to public comment. Do we have a motion to make that change? It would take a two-thirds vote of our board to make that change.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, Dr. Hanley. That's the name I heard. Any discussion? All in favor of that, please vote by signifying, raising your hand, just so we can ensure we have two-thirds. Okay, perfect. Well, then that definitely carries. So we will have our public comment at that time. We do appreciate anyone who is here to speak. Please know, we know in advance that more people signed up than time we have available for everyone to speak, but we will go in order and do three minutes each for your comments. We will begin with Jamie Sires. And as you come forward, of course, we are hearing your comments for the first time. We are taking those as information and will not be responding to those at this time. Thank you for being here, Mr. Sires.
Unfortunately, over the last few years, national and state library associations and publishers of instructional material have prioritized their propagation of personal ideologies over the education and well-being of students in our public school systems. I recently attempted to read from two books titled Red Hood and A Court of Mist and Fury at the Monthly Board of Trustees meeting for Lexington County School District II in September 2023. Upon only reading two sentences from Red Hood, the chairwoman of the board asked me, and I quote, "not to read aloud." I then attempted to read only a few sentences from A Court of Mist and Fury, bleeping out all the sexually explicit words, and I was told again to not read the material out loud. I chose to read from these two books because these books were presented to the board and District Superintendent of Education back in April with the exact passages from the books that I was attempting to read. My school district knew about these books and many more for at least five months. The next morning, I went to the school district's YouTube page and found that the recording of my comments to the school board was edited. The entire section of my public comments where I attempted to read from these two books was completely edited out. There was no mention of the edit in any comment form about the video of the meeting. This was complete censorship by the school district to hide from the public the materials that were present to be read by children in my school district. I immediately emailed all the school district board members and the District Superintendent of Education, asking why my reading from these two books was completely edited out of the monthly board meeting recording. The District Superintendent of Education responded to me, and I quote, "The district cannot have any material that is vulgar or obscene on its website. This is the definition of hypocrisy. When an adult can't read a sexually explicit book to another adult, but our school district can supply these same materials to 14- and 15-year-olds." The superintendent also stated to directly let her know if I find any book that is concerning because of the current suspension of the policy that allows community members to challenge books. This response was quite confusing to me. It took less than 12 hours for the school district to completely censor my reading from the materials, yet it took the district over five months and me reading their material publicly for these two books to be removed out of the library circulation. The school district's lack of concern and application of policies to remove sexually explicit material is a great example of the need for R. 43170. My rationale for these statements come from the fact that our current school board and District Superintendent of Education have the authority to remove these sexually explicit materials, and they either refuse to do so or, like recently, been forced to do so due to the extreme attention that has been received because of their inaction. These two books and others...
You have 20 seconds left.
Okay, thank you. These two books and others, such as Doing It, Jack of Hearts and Other Parts, Milk and Honey, Tricks, The Handmaid's Tale, Triangles, All Boys Aren't Blue, and Normal People, have only been taken out of my school district libraries because of the concern of parents and community members.
That is time, Mr. Sires.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here today and sharing with us.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul Bowers. Thank you for being here today, Mr. Bowers.
Thank you. I'm Paul Bowers. I work for the ACLU of South Carolina. I wanted to talk about the law of unintended consequences today. One, consequences for the teachers, librarians, students, and families of South Carolina. Two, for you, the members of the State Board of Education. First, I want you to think about, in passing this policy, the bureaucratic burden that you would be placing on teachers and librarians to maintain and update a running list of every book in every classroom in their district. I want you to think about the onus of self-censorship on teachers who are already overworked, underpaid, and now under constant threat of surveillance and punishment by self-appointed censors who want to ban, for example, The Handmaid's Tale. I want you to think about the unintended consequences in terms of the books that would be banned under this policy. Contrary to what you heard this morning, under a plain reading of this policy, the Bible, I'm sorry, I've read it cover to cover, it means a great deal to me, but if I were to read to you from the Song of Solomon, you would blush. Classics, Shakespeare, and more contemporary but equally important books like Sold by Patricia McCormick. I know that books like this will be banned because Moms for Liberty is trying to ban it right now in Berkeley County. This is a book that does include a scene that describes a sexual act. It's a difficult read about a difficult topic, but it's vital. The author, Patricia McCormick, goes around the country, speaking to student groups in departments of juvenile justice, and everywhere she goes, students come forward to say, "I have been sexually abused," or even, "I have been trafficked." This is a vital book. It would be banned under this policy. Finally, I would like you to think about the consequences for you as boards. You're setting yourselves up, if you pass this policy, as an appeals court for every book banning organization in South Carolina, from Abbeville to York County. A lot of y'all are educators. You've dealt with parents who come to you with complaints, often misinformed. You remember what it was like to deal with them. Now imagine that person from each of the 70-plus school districts coming to you at every school board meeting with their complaints. In the last two years, we've seen 97 books challenged in Beaufort County schools, 93 are currently being challenged in Berkeley County, 21 were banned or restricted in Ori County, over 80 have been challenged in the Spartanburg County school districts. Book banners have two things on their side. Networks of dark money from groups like Moms for Liberty and the State Freedom Caucus Network, and seemingly boundless time to harass and intimidate teachers and educators. Do you want to spend your time dealing with them? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers, for being here today. Next, we have Linda Fisher. And I will try to remind you at the 30-second mark.
Because I only thought I had two minutes.
Oh.
So I'm Linda Fisher from York County. Ladies and gentlemen, please accept the deepest gratitude from the parents and guardians of children who are students in our public school system for Superintendent Weaver's Stand Against Books in our Media Centers that are, in her own words, clearly sexually explicit and not age and developmentally appropriate. Further, the decision requires materials to align with state standards that guide the instructional program of our schools. The criteria for this decision and the language describing books included in these criteria are entirely accurate. We would also respectfully add that books that depict scientific examples but are not scientifically accurate be included in this definition, as well as the technological media challenges confronting our students and children today. We share your belief that public school resources should not be defiled by the baser and coarse plebeian fare available and marketed today, but that academic institutions of excellence should afford students the opportunity to rise above the mundane, to inspire students to greater heights of creativity, and to uplift and cultivate in our students the desire to improve the human condition by probing the outer reaches of science, medicine, space, and philosophy. We applaud the efforts of this body to redraft standards for the public school library collection policy to ensure specific definition of the requirements for the standards, thereby making it clear as to the proper and uniform implementation of these standards. Thank you for allowing the public to comment and to offer to this body research and factual examples of this issue, and for taking into consideration the concerns of parents and guardians of students, offering their encouragement to you for your review and action on these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, for being here today. Next, we have Patrick Kelly.
Good afternoon, Chair Stapleton, Superintendent Weaver, members of the board. Good afternoon, and thank you for the chance to speak with you. I come today to share some feedback on Regulation 43170. As you know, PSTA is the largest association of professional educators in South Carolina, so this proposed policy before you is of great interest to our members, as it would govern the process for selecting and challenging all instructional materials in public schools. I agree with the language in your proposal about the importance of, quote, "uniform, transparent procedures." That's something I value as both an educator and as a parent of two daughters in South Carolina's K-12 education system. However, PSTA believes these procedures already exist across the state in the form of local board policies. Districts are using these policies to address concerns from members of local communities. And while the process has been difficult, they seem to be working. As we've already heard, some materials have been removed, some have been returned. Now, I'll be the first to admit that these local board policies are imperfect, including in my own school district, but the regulation before you doesn't address all of those imperfections. An example from this morning is I heard valid concerns from parents this morning about the composition of book review committees in local districts. Your regulation would allow the superintendent to designate designees to review books. That could be the same book review committee that already exists. As a result, PSTA believes 43170 should be amended if you choose to move forward in a few ways. First, we believe the definition of age and developmentally appropriate should be refined in two key ways. It should encompass both Section C, as it currently does, and Section B of SC Code 16-15-305, and it needs greater clarity about the specific categories of content referenced in federal broadcast regulations. Failing to do so would make a good-faith effort to review challenges to classics like To Kill a Mockingbird and The Grapes of Wrath difficult because of a lack of clarity. Second, and most importantly, PSTA believes the complaint process should be open only to the same groups allowed to file a complaint under the House and Senate versions of the Transparency Act. Those groups are students, families of students, and employees. The procedure's allowance for any person residing within a school district attendance area to both request a list of classroom instructional materials and file a complaint will create untenable working conditions for educators forced to reply to complaints rather than focus on student needs. Parents should always have the ability to know what's being taught in their children's classroom, and the appropriate remedy for non-parents with concerns is through the ballot box, not through administrative complaints for materials that will never enter their home. Finally, PSTA believes this procedure should adopt one other requirement from the Transparency Act, the requirement for an individual to make a, quote, "good-faith effort" to communicate with the principal or individual involved in the selection of materials prior to filing a complaint. a complaint. Currently, one of the biggest challenges in our schools and society is the breakdown of civil dialogue. We too often askew the hard work of building relationships by talking with someone and instead talk about someone, an action we learned in kindergarten is certain to destroy relationships.
Mr. Kelly, that is time, I'm sorry.
I was waiting on 30 seconds. Thank you so much.
I appreciate you being here today, thank you. Next, we have Mark Herring.
Hi, Mark Herring. I've been in libraries for 42 years and worked in almost every type, public, academic, and special. I've also substituted in almost every grade, but one, I ended up marrying a teacher instead. The Department of Proposed, DOE's proposed guidelines are nothing more than common sense when it comes to teaching children and building library collections. Our educational system is based on gradations of learning. We teach various things at various times. We do not, for example, settle first graders with pre-algebra because they're still trying to learn how to count. We're not restricting their education, or censoring it, as some might say, but teaching what is age and developmentally appropriate and comprehensible. Each grade builds on what his previous grades have taught, or what we hope has been taught. Libraries are a bellwether to strengthen that course of study. The proposed DOE guidelines simply guide selection to align with established curricula. Because as information doubles, knowledge halves, and wisdom quarters, library collections must reflect what is academically rigorous, accurate, and suitable. We know students in the Palmetto State are by and large behind in math and reading and are most deficient in a civics education. This is not necessarily owing to ineffectual teaching, but to the overwhelming ancillary subjects that have replaced standard reading, writing, and science. The proposed guidelines free teachers to teach what they have been charged to teach and free up collections to reflect those important academic concerns. The proposed Department of Education guidelines enable all libraries to provide students, regardless of whether he or she attends school, at the same starting point. The guidelines also return libraries to where they were only a decade ago, the quiescence of library neutrality. The zeitgeist of our age today, or its spirit, is to seek those things that divide us. Nothing divides us more quickly or more often than debates about religion, politics, and of course, sex. For children and adolescents, these are bailiwick's of parental oversight, not teacher or librarian interference. One may have the prerogative to disagree, but one does not have the right to intercede with another person's children. We all have our biases, which is why libraries once embraced neutrality on controversial issues, and why these guidelines are returning libraries to the common sense neutrality approach. At the end of Hegel's magisterial lectures on the history of philosophy, he reminds readers that if we are to be the radiocynatic beings we were meant to be, quote, "we must raise ourselves above the pettiness of individual opinions and vanities," end of quote. The proposed Department of Education guidelines will not remove the possibility of book challenges altogether, but they will minimize them by guiding librarians to build collections not based on their personal religious, sexual, or political caprices, but on what is educationally sound, academically rigorous, and fundamentally important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Now, we will have Melinda Henrickson. Thank you for being here today.
Good afternoon. My name is Melinda Henrickson, and I drove up today from Beaufort County. I'm the mom of three children, a downtown business owner, and about a year ago, I founded a nonprofit organization called Families Against Book Bans, or FAB, which has quickly grown to 400 members. FAB was created to advocate for intellectual freedom after two community members challenged 97 books, and those 97 books were suddenly removed from our schools. And when I say suddenly, I mean suddenly. One AP English class was halfway through A Handmaid's Tale when the book was banned from the curriculum. Beaufort County has had the most number of challenged books of any school district in the state, and each book was required to go through a rigorous review process. There have been 12 months of review committee meetings and one month left to go. Each committee has a group of seven volunteers selected to read an assigned book. Every volunteer picks up their book and materials, reads the book, and completes a detailed assessment. Then each committee meets in person to discuss the book and submits votes. Why am I telling you this? Because the citizens of Beaufort County have put in the work. We've put in the time, we've put in the energy and the dollars, all to appease two people who complained. These proposed regulations by the state would nullify all of that hard work that hundreds of community members have already done. 92 out of our 97 books have been reviewed already. 644 people have participated, and over $8,500 in local taxpayer dollars have been spent. With all due respect, we do not want the state coming in and overriding what we've done locally. We don't want the state taking over control of our local school board and our public libraries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henrickson, for being here today. Next, we have Sheila Ryland, or Shayla Ryland?
It is Sheila.
It is Sheila, okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. My name is Sheila Ryland, I'm from Clover, South Carolina. I am a grandmother of three children in the South Carolina school districts, and I became interested in this topic when I found out through our local libraries the information that was now available to children that parents did not even know about. And so I became interested in this, and my background is in pediatric nursing. And for hundreds of years, we have realized that some information is too heavy for children to handle at a certain ages. Corey Ten Boom said this, I think, very well. She used that analogy, that some information is too heavy for children to handle. We have known this, and yet, without any scientific studies, with nothing to back it up, we are all of a sudden throwing out what we have understood to be appropriate, age-appropriate information for children at certain times. We've thrown it out and just opened the barn door to let children see anything that is out there. And so that is why I am grateful to you for looking into this and for stepping up any kind of regulation that would help protect children and help protect parental rights as to what their children are being exposed to. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. Next, we have Mary Foster.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I have been an educator for more than 20 years, and I currently teach in my own licensed preschool. I was also one of the founders of the First Charter School in Beaufort County. Just this past Sunday, I spent almost eight consecutive hours working in my classroom. This is what teachers do. We spend countless hours outside of the school day preparing engaging lessons, researching best practice, evaluating materials and their efficacy, and planning ways to meet the needs of all the students we teach. Proposed regulations like these suggest that educators like me, as well as school librarians, do not know how to do our jobs or what is best for the students we serve. At a time when our state is facing historic teacher shortages, this seems illogical at best. It wasn't that long ago, in the height of COVID, when teachers were being called heroes for quickly learning to teach online and working tirelessly to educate our students who were isolated in their homes. Now, teachers and librarians are often vilified by a vocal minority who are demanding that they know better than the trained child development experts who spend hours each week in classrooms and libraries, working with children and young adults. As a parent of two former Beaufort County students, I am all too aware of the many issues facing our public schools and the students and families they serve. Too many of the children in this state are living at or below poverty level. Many of our school buildings are decrepit and even unsafe. More children than we can fathom are coming to school hungry and often getting their only substantial meals of the day when they are on school property. And more children in South Carolina are dying from gun violence than any other way. Books are not the problem in our schools or in our state. This is an effort to focus time and energy onto a problem that simply doesn't exist and to erase stories that make some people uncomfortable. We have opt-out forms, teachers work with families who have concerns about reading materials to find alternatives, and children are not forced to read any books in schools. Further, attempting to create a connection between acts of violence and books is just simply not based in reality. People don't become abusers because they read depictions of abuse, and rapists don't learn to rape from books. However, students who have endured abuse, or rape, or countless other traumas do feel less alone and more understood when they see their experiences reflected in books. I urge you to expend your time and energy working towards solutions for the very real problems our students and teachers are facing, and rest assured that access to too many books or stories that might be different from your own isn't one of them. Thank you for your time and your commitment to the success of our public schools.
Thank you for being here today. Next, we have Kay Mean.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board members, and Superintendent Weaver. My name is Kay Mean. I reside within Lexington School District 2. I'm a concerned mother and taxpayer. My district is failing to prepare students. Part of the issue is the purchasing of books that are not aligned with educational standards. My experience to speak on these books is twofold. I am a parent, associate member of SCASL. As a member of the State Book Award Committee for Young Adult Genre, let me clarify that I am not in any capacity here to speak on behalf of SCASL, just within my experience of this role. I apply for this opportunity to locate the sources and procedures of how these books were chosen and to find quality books for my children. I'd like to start by saying that I am honored to serve with these dedicated librarians. I see their passion for books, better yet, their passion to get kids reading. I also see the deception and marketing of these books. The intertwining of the book publishers and the American Library Association, in conjunction with book review entities, has placed us in this tumultuous position. The book, the common book review sources such as Kirkus, Hornbook, School Library Journal, Publishers Weekly, were at one point credible sources. What I'm finding in these books is not what the book review states. In these YA books, the concerning themes found are the overuse of explicit language, sexual content, underlying themes of divisiveness, and consistent oppressive plots. This regulation in front of you protects quality literature and excludes these types of books. Freedom to read does not mean freedom to give a child material that he or she is not prepared to process emotionally. Age-appropriate needs to be defined, yet not defined by these booksellers. They're promoting the YA books with sexual content to children as young as age 10. Constant exposure to negative content will groove neurological pathways that perpetually keep a person in that negative mindset. This term is called neuroplasticity. It's been proven to be used positively and negatively. I have a bachelor of science degree in psychology, and I see the connections these books have. Children thrive within boundaries. We have to establish guardrails with quality materials. Neuroplasticity is taught us at the prefrontal cortex is not developed until age 25. So it's critical our children have these guardrails in place, because without it, it's dangerous and irresponsible. Providing guidelines that give protection and responsibility to our librarians and educators so they are able to purchase quality literature ensures children have the freedom to read smart and safe. Local districts are failing to ensure their purchases are aligned with educational content. Under South Carolina Code 59, you have the authority to designate a uniform series of textbooks to be used. Therefore, this regulation needs to be passed to include library books. This will result in the proper use of our tax dollars by purchasing books that align with educational standards to ensure children are able to be creative and critical thinkers, not programmed learners. I appreciate this opportunity to share it with you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And finally, we have Ms. Delane Fryerson.
Good afternoon. I am Delane Fryerson. I am a former high school, middle school, and college teacher of history, and I am a member of the South Carolina Education Association, retired. Historically, local school boards have been responsible for guiding the selection of library books and instructional materials, and it should remain there. The "any person" provision opens the door for any person or any group to come in and challenge educational materials regardless of the agenda of the "any person." If decisions by the local school boards are appealed to the State Board of Education and the State Board of Education makes a determination according to the proposal, this would allow the decision to apply to the entire state, and this should not be. The local school boards and the people of that community should be the people who make responsible decisions that pertain to their community. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Fryerson. We appreciate everyone who spoke today for public comment, and we do apologize that everyone who signed up hoping to speak could not, but we have reached our time limit. We will now move on to our State Board items and our committee reports. I'll begin with the report from the Policy and Legislative Committee. We did have one item on our agenda today, and that was the first reading of proposed amendments to State Board of Education Regulation 43243.1. No, no wonder, it's on the wrong one. I am so sorry, I'm reading the wrong notes. Let me scoot to this agenda, because it is written wrong on that one. But it was for the proposed State Board of Regulation 43170, Uniform Procedure for Selection or Reconsideration of Instructional Materials. During that time, our committee did hear from various individuals for public comment, and also had discussion and a presentation from Mr. Coleman regarding that. At the end, we did vote for that to come to full board today, so we will be bringing that to full board. It will not be on a consent agenda. This actually will serve as a motion from the Policy and Legislative Committee just for that information as our report. It does not require a second. Is there any discussion or question? With no questions, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that carries. We did not have an Educator Professions Committee report today. They did not meet, and the Standards, Learning, and Accountability Committee also did not meet. We will now, though, move into a report from Mr. Walters for our Educator Licenseur Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our committee had 13 cases before us today. 10 of those cases were for unprofessional conduct, for breach of contract. Two were for unprofessional conduct that resulted in public reprimands, and one was for unprofessional conduct, and those cases were all ratified in the Full Board License Case Committee. And I'd also like to commend the Office of General Counsel. We're definitely seeing that the cases are getting to us quicker, while they're still being very careful to protect the safeguards and the due process rights of the parties involved.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Walters, and I know we echo that as well. We did also, we were able, as he shared, the Full Board Licenseur Committee did meet and ratify those cases. We also, in Full Board Licenseur, had four additional cases for consideration. Those resulted in two approvals for initial certification, one denial, and one permanent revocation. So that was for a total of 17 cases today, and as Mr. Walters said, we are always so appreciative to the Office of General Counsel for all of the information they provide to prepare us for those ahead of time and to guide us through that process. Next on the agenda, I did want to share, in accordance with State Board Rule BBAA, the Chair of the State Board of Education must appoint a nominating committee of no more than three board members at the November board meeting to name a nominee for the State Board of Education Chair-elect for the upcoming year. So the nominating committee will then present its nominee to the State Board during our December meeting. On October 10th, 2023, I did appoint Alan Walters, Delaney Fryerson, and Sally Lee to the nominating committee, and on October 27th, Mr. Walters agreed to chair that committee for us, so we are very appreciative of that. Mr. Walters will report the committee's nomination at our December 13th State Board meeting. So thank you for being willing to serve, and thank you, Ms. Fryerson, as well for being willing to serve. As we shared, there is nothing on today's consent agenda, so we will move into our State Board of Education report. And at this time, we are looking at the first reading of proposed State Board of Education Regulation 43170, Uniform Procedure for Selection or Reconsideration of Instructional Materials. We will begin today with Mr. John Tyler, our Deputy Superintendent and General Counsel- our Deputy Superintendent and General Counsel from the Division of Legal Affairs, to start that presentation. Thank you, Mr. Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair and honorable members of the State Board of Education. It is my privilege this morning to present to you, or this afternoon, I should say, present to you two things. One is to introduce the law under which this regulation will, would reside pending approval. And number two is to introduce the presenter, who is outside counsel for the South Carolina Department of Education. Let's start with the law. First, South Carolina Code Section fifty-nine-five-sixty, Sub-Items One and Seven. This is the general powers of the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education has the power to adopt policies, rules, and regulations not inconsistent with the laws of the state for its own government and for the government of the free public schools. And Item Seven, the State Board of Education has the power to prescribe and enforce the use of textbooks and other instructional materials for the various subjects taught or used in conjunction within the free public schools of the state. Now, as for our presenter, Mr. Miles Coleman is a partner at Nelson Mullins and has significant experience with representing state agencies as well as school districts and First Amendment litigation. And I'm not going to eat into his time at all. Mr. Coleman.
Thank you for being here today, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you. I appreciate you all's time and your service on this board. The proposed regulation that you have before you and that we're here to talk about today is the product of a careful and thoughtful process with the goal of crafting a document and a process that's pedagogically appropriate, scientifically and medically supportable, logistically feasible, and legally defensible. The document in front of you is a result of many, many hours of careful thought, weighing, balancing, competing concerns, competing interests, the interests of district boards, parents, teachers, librarians, educators, and the time that will be involved for those people and for this board itself. It's the result of scores of conversations, perhaps hundreds of conversations and discussions among and between the department's leadership and teachers, librarians, administrators, parents, and other interested parties. What I'd like to do in our time this afternoon is cover a number of things. Let me give you a little bit of a roadmap of what I hope to talk about. And then, as you are listening, you can tick those items off in your mind and know that we're growing closer and closer to the end of the station. First, I want to talk a little bit about me. I hope that doesn't seem self-aggrandizing, but I do think it's important for you all, if you're going to listen and appropriately weigh my thoughts on this matter, that you know on what basis I opine to you. Next, I'll want to talk a little bit about why there's a need for this regulation, the need or the motivation for it. After that, what is contained in the proposed regulation. After that, a little bit about why it is legally defensible. You'll get to sit through constitutional law class with me for just a few minutes this morning. And at the end, I'll save some time with the Chair's discretion to answer any questions that you might have. All right, first, about me, why am I here and why should you care what I think about this regulation? As John mentioned a little bit ago, I'm a partner at Nelson Mullins Rowley in Scarborough, one of the country's largest law firms. I'm based here in South Carolina, where I live in Greenville. And a significant portion of my practice is devoted to First Amendment law and constitutional law. In that context, I represent clients that include public and private universities, public school districts, government officials, and private entities. I have sued state agencies for constitutional violations. I have defended state agencies against lawsuits alleging constitutional violations. I've represented multiple current and former governors of South Carolina, members of our federal legislative delegation. I've spoken, I've written and published about constitutional law. I've written briefs with and for some of the country's most renowned and leading First Amendment and constitutional law scholars and experts. And earlier this year, the United States Supreme Court cited twice in its majority opinion to my First Amendment work. Why do I bring all of that up? I hope not to seem self-promoting, but to say that I believe I have training and experience and knowledge that allows me to speak helpfully to you on this regulation and to answer questions that you might have. Enough about me. Next, why? What's the motivation for this regulation? We've heard a little bit about that, both in the committee meeting this morning and already in the public comments today. Questions about the appropriateness and the educational suitability of instructional material are becoming more and more common, and unfortunately, more and more divisive and polarizing. At present, across the state, there are no clear, consistent definitions in use, even for the words I just used. At present, there are no clear, uniform, transparent standards or processes for treating these complaints. Now, to be clear, I think, and I believe the department leadership thinks, and I suspect that each one of you thinks, in fact, knows that the vast majority of our teachers, librarians, and administrators are acting in good faith, in common sense, with the best interest of the students at heart. But that doesn't mean there's no need for a regulation. Let's think by analogy. I believe that the vast majority of gun owners are law-abiding citizens who act with common sense and in good faith and with safety and responsibility, but we still regulate. I believe the vast majority of drivers on our roads are licensed. They're careful, they're cautious, and they're well-meaning, but we still regulate. And here too, I believe the vast majority, again, of teachers, librarians, educators, administrators, district board members, are good people acting in good faith, but that doesn't mean we can just allow everything to continue in the undefined, inconsistent, non-transparent way that in some, but not all, instances we have seen. What you're left with currently is a patchwork process. In some districts, complaints are handled promptly; in others, not at all. In some districts, complaints are handled transparently; in others, less so. And in some districts, a certain book or material might be allowed in use. It might remain on the shelves, and in others, it might not. So why are we doing this? We want to try to bring a degree of uniformity, clarity, consistency, and transparency. All right, next, what is in the regulation? This will probably take the longest section of our time together. I don't want to go into too much detail and take too much time, but this is a serious topic, and it demands serious attention. And I know you all want to give it the attention and the diligence that it deserves. So I apologize in advance if I spend too long, but I do want us to talk about some of the points in here to make sure we understand what the reg does and what it doesn't. If you have in front of you, as I believe you do, the same copy that I've got, seven pages long, we'll move, we'll start at the bottom of page two. Very bottom of page two, Section One, Definitions. Starts at the bottom of page two, spills over onto page three. Subsection A, Instructional Materials. I don't think we need to spend too much time there, but it defines what we're talking about. Briefly, it's not just library books. It's not just classroom books. It's any sort of materials, including, but not limited to, library books, classroom textbooks, materials that are available in resource centers, books available in other parts of the school, even if they aren't a textbook and even if they're not found in a library. Sort of any material in the school that could be used for instruction, could be provided to a student as part of the public school's educational mission. Subsection B of the definitions, Instructional Program. Again, I don't think we need to spend too much time here. Simply put, perhaps more simply than in the regulatory language, anything that happens at a school during the school day, on school grounds, related to the school's mission. It's more than just what's taught in the classroom. It's broader than that, but it's things that happen in school. I don't think we have to spend too much more time on that subsection. Subsection C, however, I think we might want to spend a little bit longer on. We've heard some comments about it already this afternoon, and I want to look at it a little bit more closely. Subsection C defines the term "age and developmentally appropriate." It has a couple of components to that definition. The first is it means topics, messages, and teaching methods that are suitable to particular ages or age groups of children. I think we all understand from experience, from literature, from data, that different age groups have different emotional, cognitive, and developmental capacity to handle different material. That could be just the academic complexity of the material. It could be the content of the material. So there's, that piece of it is built in here. Next, instructional material is not. And they'll list two things that it's not. First, it's not material that includes descriptions or visual depictions of sexual conduct as that term is defined in the South Carolina Code. We won't look at that code section now, but you, of course, are free to do so on your own time. Let me stop briefly to make a comment here. Both in this afternoon's comments and this morning's, in the public, the public comment portion of the hearing, you heard, I believe incorrectly, that this regulation would allow the Bible to be banned from public schools, perhaps books by Mark Twain, perhaps Shakespeare, and so on. Wrong. I too have read the Bible. It does not contain any visual or verbal descriptive depictions that would satisfy the requirements of that code section listed there. We heard the example of the Book of Song of Solomon. I'll quote you the relevant section, and I say quote, I'm paraphrasing. It's been a few years since I've read it. But the author, sometimes referred to as the singer, speaking metaphorically to his beloved, says, and I think this is the part that would be considered objectionable, "Your breasts are like two heaps of wheat; your neck is like an ivory tower; your teeth are like a herd of goats." Now, leaving aside the different cultural standards, I'm not sure that my wife would appreciate her teeth being referred to as a herd of goats. Nothing, nothing in that particular excerpt or any others from that book or from any of the other books of the Bible are approaching anywhere close to the description found in South Carolina Code sixteen fifteen dash three oh five. Same thing for Shakespeare. I've read not all, but many of Shakespeare's plays. I've been in a few of them. I've watched many of them. Do they sometimes include humor? Yes, sometimes even humor that might be moderately mildly off-color, innuendo. They do. Do they come anywhere close to the level of detail and graphic detail referred to in South Carolina Code sixteen fifteen dash three oh five? They don't. Let me move on to the next section of this definition. Furthermore, it says, "Materials are not age and developmentally appropriate. If they include descriptions or visual depictions, they would be considered obscene or indecent." And here's what I want you to pay attention to. Under federal statutes, regulations, and interpretive precedent, and which could not be portrayed or read aloud on normal daytime broadcast television. Don't be alarmed. We're not sweeping the baby out with the bathwater here. In order to not be considered age and developmentally appropriate under this, you've got to have material in there that's contrary to federal law that federal, or we could say even state, case precedent has determined to be obscene or vulgar or indecent and which couldn't be aired on daytime television. I don't think this is something that we should, we should, we should be too concerned about that it's somehow going to sweep out vast swathes of the educational material available in the world. I'll tell you right now, I practice in this area, and I'm not aware of any court, state or federal, that's ever held Shakespeare to be vulgar, indecent, or obscene. Same thing for the Bible, same thing for Huckleberry Finn. I haven't read The Handmaid's Tale, but I'm not aware that any court has ever found it to be so obscene and indecent that it would fail under this standard, this particular piece of the standard. We'll circle back a little bit later when we get to the legal discussion to some of these topics, but I want to keep moving for now. Let's move on from the definitions to Section Two, the Responsibility of District School Boards for Instructional Materials and Transparency. I don't think we need to spend too much time here. This is articulating something that we already know to be true and that already exists independently of this regulation. That is, that each school district is a political subdivision of the state, that its board has authority to superintend and administer its functions. The only thing I'll add while we're talking about this, and again, this will circle, we'll circle back to it again a little bit later, is the concept that we've already heard a little bit about during the public comment of local control versus state control. Again, I'll talk more about it later, but one thing I want to mention while we're looking at this section of the reg, and I ask your pardon because this is going to be a little bit nerdy of me from a legal standpoint, and it won't be the last time I get a little bit nerdy and doctrinal on you. But there's a significant difference when we talk about local control in the context of public schools. Why is that? Because public school districts are political subdivisions. They are creations of the state. They do not have inherent sovereignty. Think of it this way, by analogy. It's the opposite of the relationship between the United States and the states. The states exist as independent sovereigns who in seventeen eighty-seven banded together and by consent created a federal government. The federal government is a creation of the states. That is not true at the state level. It is not the political subdivisions that created the state, but vice versa. And so while there may be prudential reasons why we think that in some contexts local control is better, for example, that perhaps the decision-makers are closer to the people they represent. In this context, there's not a legal argument to say that local control must remain at the local level. I'd also point out that to the extent that each one of you are here in a representative capacity, you are selected by people selected by the voters. You too are representatives. You're not just faceless bureaucrats who are appointed and have no connections to your home districts and the citizens thereof. All that to say, we recognize, and the regulation does as well, that a school district has the responsibility and the authority to superintend and administer that district. That doesn't mean that they're the final authority for everything that happens. They're still subject to state law and state regulations. Section Three, or at the bottom of page three, Criteria for a District's Selection or Review of New or Existing Instructional Materials. Subsection A, I don't think we need to spend too much time on. The district's board is responsible for the materials that are in the school. Subsection B. Subsection B sets out two mandatory requirements that must both be satisfied before material can be used in public school. Now, let me pause briefly. Before we look at what those two are, I want to contrast subsection B, subsection C. Subsection B is the two mandatory requirements. Of the millions of books and other instructional materials in the world, subsection B will probably only remove a vanishingly small percentage of them. And there's going to be millions left still. So how do you pick among those? That's when we get to subsection C, which gives a number of prudential guidelines that can be applied to determine, how do we pick out of ten thousand books about World War II? Which ones do we want to put on our shelves? Well, first, they've got to clear the two preliminary thresholds. Then we've got five factors. Let's drill down on subsection B a little bit. What are the two preliminary mandatory factors? First, you'll see this in the parenthetical A halfway through that paragraph. Material must be age and developmentally appropriate as that term is defined herein. We've already talked about what that definition is. Subsection B must be aligned with and supportive of the instructional program of the school or the district. Simply put, the material has to be age-appropriate and it has to support the state standards. That shouldn't be a controversial proposition. Now, applying it in particular instances may require judgment, but we do that every day. State agencies do that every day. State courts, federal courts, do that every day. But the standard we're trying to articulate here shouldn't be surprising, novel, or really frankly, that innovative. It's common sense. So we've got these two mandatory factors. Age and developmentally appropriate, aligned with state standards. Subsection C. Once you've cleared those two hurdles, well, then how do you pick among the thousands and thousands and thousands of books and materials that are available? Well, we weigh them against one another. We've got five criteria here to be weighed and con- We've got five criteria here to be weighed and considered. Number one, academic and educational rigor. Number two, educational significance. Number three, the material's validity, accuracy, objectivity, currency, and appropriateness. Four, the fact that you can only fit so many books in a library. The Library of Congress has a copy of every book published in the United States. We don't have that privilege in our district libraries. We've only got so much space, so we've got to pick the space best allocated to this book or to that book. And again, that's an exercise of judgment, one that resides in the first instance at the local level. Number five, the fact there's only so many hours in the day, we can't teach everything. We've got to pick what's going to be the most beneficial supporting the educational mission. Subsection D, I want to emphasize, you will see this language of subsection D several more times as we move through the regulation. Why? Why the repetition? Because it's important, because we want to make it clear. I'm going to read it to you, it's not too long, and I'm going to talk about it. Subsection D, "In no event shall a school district board's decision to remove existing instructional material or to reject the proposed addition of new instructional material be based primarily on or motivated by the district board's disagreement with or opposition to the viewpoints expressed therein." Let me be clear. This regulation does not allow for, and in fact expressly forbids, a school board from removing material or rejecting material merely because district board members don't like the viewpoints expressed in it. Let me give you an example. I happen to think that Jimmy Carter wasn't that great of a president. That's my opinion. So let's imagine if I was a school district board member and I realized, I found out there was a biography in the school library about Jimmy Carter. And man, it wasn't just a biography, it was a hagiography. I mean, it made him out to be the best ever. And imagine if I said, I don't agree with that, he was a terrible president, I think we should get rid of that. Yank it. Not allowed. Why? I'm not disagreeing with the factual accuracy of the book. I'm not disagreeing with the fact that it is in fact supportive of state civic standards. I'm not disagreeing with the fact that it's well-written, it's objectively accurate. Or I'm disagreeing with it, in that case, it's just, I don't like the ideas, I don't like the fact that they make him sound good, and I think he's bad. Or put the shoe on the other foot. Imagine that a school district board member didn't like Franklin Roosevelt. Again, you can't yank the book just because you don't like the political viewpoints expressed in it or the ideas in it. You could pull that book if it contains factual inaccuracies. You could pull that book if it's not supportive of any state standard. You could pull that book if it's not age, developmentally appropriate, or if it includes materials that the state has already by statute defined as sexually indecent. Subsection E, again, we're partway through page four. And I think we heard mention of this in the public comment earlier. A district board, again, remains ultimately responsible for administering its district. But we understand that that's a lot of work. We do not want to burden a district's board or a district superintendent with more work than he or they or she can reasonably do. What do we do about that? We expressly allow for the delegation of authority. You keep reading section E, I won't read the entire thing to you, but a district board can delegate to the superintendent, who in turn can delegate it to a designee, the authority of, in the first sentence, reviewing materials. Right, if there's fear that there will be a landslide, an avalanche of complaints, well, get out ahead of that landslide. Review the materials, and if there's ones that you know are problematic, deal with them before the landslide hits. Subsection, excuse me, section four, nearing the bottom of page four. We're more than halfway through this section, hang in there with me. Public participation. You see the very first line of text there, beginning August first, twenty twenty-four. Let's pause for a second. That landslide, that avalanche that I mentioned a second ago, we're building in some time to get out ahead of it. From now to August is ten months away, give or take, if I've done the math right in my head. That's plenty of time, includes plenty of time to start thinking through and preparing and implementing the regulation, understanding what it means, getting out ahead of it. There's not going to be on day one, some immediate impracticable burden imposed on districts, on teachers, or on librarians. Let's keep reading. Any person residing within the school district attendance. Let's stop there again. We've already heard, and I think people of good faith could disagree on who should be allowed to bring a complaint, who should be allowed to bring a challenge. The versions we've heard this afternoon are either that it should be limited to parents or legal guardians of people in the school district, or, as you see here, any person residing within the district. I think you could have a difference of opinion there, but I'll tell you why. This version refers to any person in the district. By analogy, I'll refer to what's known as taxpayer standing. My friend who spoke earlier from the ACLU, I'm sure is familiar with it, as it's a doctrine that his employer uses frequently to bring lawsuits. Typically, you're only allowed to bring a lawsuit if you have been personally, individually, directly harmed by the conduct you're complaining of. But thanks to the doctrine of taxpayer standing, in certain situations, a person who is a taxpayer can bring a lawsuit, even if he or she have not themselves been harmed by saying, hey, I have an interest, I'm funding the government, I'm interested in what it's doing with the money. I think that's a basis upon which any person ought to be able to challenge what's going on in a district that they're funding with their tax revenue. Let's keep reading. This is a long section, I won't read the whole thing, I'm going to summarize. Beginning August first, twenty twenty-four, any person can fill out a complaint form that'll be promulgated by the department. They can turn it in. Let me pause there again briefly. It's been suggested that before turning in a form, the, the complainant should go and talk to either the teacher, or the librarian, the principal, or the superintendent. Sure, that's fine. Nothing here to stop them from doing that. That's always a reasonable place to start. But what happens when it doesn't work? When your email goes unanswered, when your complaint goes unaddressed? Well, that's why we have a regulation. Let's keep going. It's turning in a complaint form, we're now at the top of page five. Subsection B, "Within sixty days after the complaint is received, the district board conducts a hearing." Let's pause briefly, sixty days. Is it too long? Is it too short? I don't know. Is it reasonable? Yes. We've heard already today, stories of district boards taking five months to deal with a, with a complaint. We heard earlier of a district board taking a hundred and fifteen days just to respond to a complaint. Sometimes those complaints go into a void. Is thirty days too short? Maybe. We're not trying to put an excessive burden on the hard-working volunteers who already staff district boards, but we do have to pick a deadline. You and I all know that without a deadline, it ain't, it ain't going to get done. We picked sixty days, and I think it's a reasonable one. The board's going to meet to consider the complaint. It'll be a public meeting. It'll be subject to open meeting laws. It'll comply with the Freedom of Information Act. It'll involve public comment, both for and against. What do all those things sound like to you? They sound like reasonable notice, they sound like fair process, they sound like due process and fair procedure. But wait, there's more. When they vote, when they make a decision at that meeting, the district board must articulate what their finding is, how they reached it, why they reached it, and how they complied with the requirement of this regulation. Again, we're trying to get more transparency, we're trying to get more of a fair, adequate due process, and one that allows both for the voters to understand what's going on, right? The voters, uh, when, when the time comes, can decide to retain or replace school board members. And we're trying to create a record that allows this board, in the event of an appeal, to understand what happened and to have ample basis to assess, review, and reach its own decision. Subsection D refers to that appeal procedure. Any complainant who's aggrieved by a decision of the district board may file a written appeal to the State Board of Education. It then details what that process would look like. Subsection D is a long paragraph. I grant you that. Even so, it is not exhaustive. One of the things that Mr. Walters and I discussed in the committee hearing this morning was the fact that it doesn't lay out, I would argue it can't lay out in exhaustive detail what exactly that process and procedure looks like down to every yard, down to every nth degree. But I would point out too, again, as we discussed and you brought up this morning, this board already has experience with and precedent in holding hearings. Sounds like you may have had some of those today. Sometimes they're evidentiary, sometimes they are reviewing a written record. You're used to clearly in this meeting itself, hearing public comment. So the, a, a, all that to say, the procedure outlined in subsection D, frankly, like our constitution, like many of our laws, gives you the skeleton of what's going to happen, but you're going to have to put some of the meat on the bones. That's not an unusual exercise, both in regulatory drafting and in agency implementation. Like the district board meeting, the board, the, the meeting held by this board to review an appeal, it'll have to comply with open meetings laws, it'll be subject to the Freedom of Information Act. You will have a record of the decision below, you'll have comments from the public, both for and against. And like the district board meeting below, you'll have to explain your decision, what it is, how you reached it, and how it complies with this regulation. Again, transparency, consistency, and accountability. Bottom of that page, subsection E, I won't read it to you again, but I do want to point it out. Just like the district board can't make its decision based on its political opposition or disagreement to the viewpoints in the book, y'all can't make your decision based on your political opposition or disagreement to the viewpoints expressed in any book. Let's move on, bottom of page five, section five, this is a short one. District selection of new instructional materials. Any new material that a district is thinking about requiring, it's got to comply with these same criteria. That's the district board's obligation. Once it comes in through the door of the school, it becomes existing instructional material, and it's subject to challenge and review as we've just discussed. Only thing I'll point out there, subsection B, top of page six, there it is again. Can't make those decisions based on viewpoint discriminatory means. Let's use an example that's in the news today. Let's say that there's a book in the library having to do with Palestinian and Jewish international relations. Boy, that's a hot topic. I'll bet some of y'all have opinions about it. I bet I do too. But guess what? Can't get rid of a book out of the library because it expresses a viewpoint as long as it's a factually accurate viewpoint. It's objective, it's verifiable, it's accurate. You can't get rid of it just because you disagree with it. Does that make sense? When we come back around to the, uh, the constitutional law class at the end where I talk about case law, I'll remind you of it again. Top or middle of page six, section six. Statewide effect of the State Board of Education's determination. So once a book has come up, I say book, it could be any piece of instructional material. It's come up through this process, it's gotten to this board, you have given it due regard, you have gone through the process, the procedure that we've just discussed, and you've made a decision. That decision is going to apply on a statewide basis. Couple of thoughts on this. First, this should not strike you as a novel exercise of authority. The statutes that Mr. Tyler referred to and read from briefly earlier have already given you this authority. This is not something new, it's a statutorily authorized mechanism. Second, this is also an incredible efficiency factor. Because what's going to happen? If it doesn't have broader effect than the single district it came up in, you're going to hear that same appeal eighty more times, one after another, after another. I don't think anybody thinks that's a good idea. Third, this should not strike you as alarming because this is the exact same standard that we apply daily in numerous other contexts. When Judge Morgan from the state trial court in Greenville County reaches a decision, and it gets appealed, and it goes up to the State Court of Appeals and the State Supreme Court, and they set a binding precedential ruling, does that ruling just apply in Greenville County? Oh, no, statewide. When a case goes up to the US Supreme Court and they reach a decision, does that new precedent apply only in whatever state it came from? No, it's national in this jurisdiction. Put it at a state level, when DHEC adopts a new regulation relating to stormwater, does that apply only in Richland County where DHEC sits? No, statewide. Same thing here. You're a state agency no less than the others. You're a governmental entity, different in type, but not in nature, to this extent, from a court. And your, your, your decisions can, and in this case, would have statewide effect. We're wrapping up with, toward the end of this section, hang in. Bottom of page six, section seven, enforcement. You've got two subsections here. If the state board determines that a district or district employee is in violation of this section, for a first violation, the board can issue a written warning. For a second violation, this is subsection B, the board can do a little bit more than that. But before we get to that, loo- look at subsection B. We're talking about a second violation, so we're talking repeat offenders here. And more significantly than that, if, I'm halfway through the first line of subsection B, if the state board determines that the violation or failure was knowing, willful, intentional, excuse me, I went out of order, knowing, intentional, or willful, or recklessly disregarded the law. That's a pretty high standard. Right, so anything you hear that teachers are going to be living under the sword of Damocles, always fearful that without warning, it could fall upon them for an innocent mistake, wrong. They might need to be worried about willful, reckless disregard, knowing intentional conduct in violation of state regulation, but innocent mistakes aren't going to be published. This regulation isn't a gotcha game, not to get anybody who's acting in good faith and seeking to comply with the law. Last page, page seven. Section seven, preemption. Three subsections, we can knock them out pretty quickly. First, this regulation upon its effective date will preempt, supersede, or replace any district or local policy to the extent it's inconsistent with this regulation. Now read what it's saying, and don't hear what it's not. This replaces or supersedes a district's policy to the extent they're inconsistent. District can still have its policy if it wants, it just can't be inconsistent with or violative of this policy. Number two, this is to acknowledge the fact that there are already statutes, regulations, and procedures, some, some of which are frankly just quite administrative in nature for how textbooks are selected, approved, acquired, purchased, owned. This policy would supplement, it's an additional layer of review for the selection of materials, but it does not displace or replace existing textbook selection regs. Hopefully that makes sense. It, it took me a little while to wrap my head around it too, and y'all are probably, uh, more up to speed on it than I am. Subsection three, under preemption. And frankly, this is a little bit superfluous because in our system of government, a regulation can never supersede a statute. In the same ways that a state law can't supersede a federal law. That's basic supremacy clause stuff, but we say it here anyway, just to make sure there's no doubt. Nothing in this regulation can supersede the provisions of the South Carolina Code, including, and it lists several of them, and what they're about. Again, just to be clear that there's no superseding effect. I'll mention too, on that point, a great question that Mr. Walters asked me this morning, which some of you might have as well. This regulation incorporates by reference a section, a definitional section, from the South Carolina Criminal Code. He asked whether or not someone or some district or a school found to be in violation of this would also then be in violation of the criminal code. The answer is no. A regulation cannot expand the reach of a statute where that statute does not already go. The statute is what it is, it applies where it applies, and we can't change that with a regulation. And then secondly, by incorporating the definitions of a statute, i- it, it's frankly a fairly common exercise in the law. If there's already a good definition for something, we're not going to repeat it, we're going to refer to it. And it doesn't incorporate all of that law or expand it where it doesn't already apply. Okay, we've made it through the longest section, we're on the downward slope, and maybe the part that I'm going to like the best. Welcome to Constitutional Law Class, I'm your professor today. We're only talking about four cases, so we won't take too long, and then hopefully we'll have some time for some questions, if you have them. I want to talk about four cases with you, two of them from the US Supreme Court, one from the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, that's the federal appellate court in the region where South Carolina sits, and one from the Eleventh Circuit Court of Appeals. We'll go in order from oldest to newest. The first one, from nineteen eighty-two, a great year for America, but a difficult year for school library cases. Island Trees Unified School District versus PICO. I usually hear this case referred to as PICO. Back to pattern briefly, with a number of parents were concerned about books in a school library. Sound familiar? It was going on forty years ago, it's going on today. They brought a challenge, it went through the process, eventually the case ends up at the US Supreme Court. The problem with PICO is of nine justices, we got seven different written opinions. There is no majority holding. As a side note, if anybody ever tells you that PICO held, and they continue the sentence, it didn't. There was no majority holding. The only thing that everybody agreed on was that they weren't ready to decide that case yet. They needed more factual development. So they agreed to send the case back down for further proceedings. What we can figure out from PICO is what nine Supreme Court justices, who were on the court forty years ago, thought should be the rule in a case like this. Does that mean that's what any of the nine Supreme Court justices on the court today would also think? Maybe. Maybe it's a guide. Maybe it's a guide of what nine thoughtful, educated lawyers in nineteen eighty-two thought, and we can take some guidance from it. Here's what we can take from PICO. There were two points on which both the plurality, that's less than a majority, the plurality and the dissent and most of the concurrences agreed, that books that are pervasively vulgar could be excluded from a library and that books can be excluded from a library if they're not educationally suitable. If those two things sound familiar to you, it's because we just talked about them in this regulation. What are the two threshold requirements the materials have to clear? Age and developmentally appropriate, which incorporates that vulgarity or obscenity standard and educationally suitable by being aligned with and supportive of the state standards. The seven opinions in PICO also give us a little bit more guidance. And again, once it gets down to the level of individual justice writing individually, again, it might be helpful, it might be persuasive, but we take it for what it's worth. What we can see from the individual opinions are that at least some of the justices were concerned about or suspicious about the potential that decisions by a district's board could be made merely based on the board's opposition to or political disagreement with the viewpoints expressed in the book. If that also sounds familiar to you, it's because we just talked about it. It's in that regulation three times. So to the extent that we can discern guidance from PICO, this regulation lines up with it all the way. Next case, Hazelwood versus Kuhlmeier. Just to make it confusing, constitutional scholars sometimes call this case Hazelwood and they sometimes call it Kuhlmeier. Same case, you just got to be ready to recognize it in either instance. Nineteen eighty-eight, so this case post-dates PICO. This case is actually a little bit harder, right? Because PICO involved library books. That's a book purchased by the government, owned by the government, housed by the government and taken by the government and presented to children. That's government speech. Hazelwood involved a hybrid of student speech and school speech. Let me give a brief sort of footnote here. In the First Amendment world, there's a really, really, really significant distinction between private expression on the one hand and government speech on the other. Private expression in the school context. Y'all probably remember hearing about, excuse me, or having read about, one of the most famous Supreme Court school free speech decisions, Tinker versus Des Moines Independent School District during the Vietnam War. Several students wanted to come to school wearing black armbands to protest the Vietnam War. Principal didn't like it, told them they couldn't wear it, sent them home. Case makes it all the way up to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court says, yeah, students don't abandon their First Amendment rights when they walk through the schoolhouse gates. If a student wants to express his or her own opinion, they're engaged in expressive activity or communication, they should be allowed to do so unless the threat posed by their expressive activity would materially disrupt the educational environment. Now that's a useful standard for student speech. Different ballgame when we're talking about government speech. Government employees being paid by the government to do a government job at a government desk using a government computer on government time do not have the same expressive rights in that moment as students do. I won't take you too far down the road of Garcetti versus Sabalos, the key Supreme Court case that talks about that. But think of it this way, I think this will make it, at a very apprehensible level, clear to you. Imagine, for example, a teacher who is, a public school teacher who, let's say, is a devout Mormon. On the weekends, is that teacher allowed to attend his or her gathering of worship? Absolutely. Is that teacher allowed to teach a Sunday school class there? Of course. Could that teacher even teach a Sunday school class to students who during the week are his or her pupils? Sure. Can that teacher read the books they want at home? Sure. Can they give out the books they want at home? Sure. Can they proselytize the neighbors? Of course, on their own time. But it's different when you're on school grounds, during the school day, on the clock, doing your job. In that case, you ought not be, that teacher or those of any other faith group ought not be proselytizing students during the school day, right? We understand this. I don't have to play the analogy all the way out for you. But you understand the difference between what's happening in your private capacity of expression and the capacity of government. Now, why do we take that long detour while talking about Hazelwood? So this case is a hybrid. Student-authored newspaper, but it's a school-sponsored newspaper, right? You see? So you've got student expression, you have these students, high school students, who'd written a series of articles about teen pregnancy. That's student expression, they wrote it, they want to publish it. Those are their ideas they want to put out. But they're not really doing this purely on their own time, right? They're doing this in a school-sponsored newspaper. It's school-supported, they have a faculty advisor, the school disseminates the paper, and the principal didn't like it. He thought some of the content wasn't appropriate, wasn't age-appropriate for the students. So it's harder because it's that hybrid case, it's a mixed case. But Hazelwood held that a school administrator has the right to control, in that instance, newspaper content for suitability and appropriateness. Why do I bring that up? Because even in that case, which is harder than a curriculum case, harder than a library case, the Supreme Court found that the district, or in that case, the administration, had the ability to control. Two more cases. The first, from the Fourth Circuit, case is known as Boring, not because people find it uninteresting. That was literally the name of the plaintiff, Boring. Fourth Circuit case from nineteen ninety-six. Briefly, the fact pattern in that case involved a drama teacher, boring, Mr. Boring, who had selected a dramatic production for the school's theatrical troupe to learn, rehearse and present. It had stuff in it that the administration didn't think was suitable and they told him not to do it.